Let's see. Good evening and welcome to Sletta Independent School District's video conference meeting of the Board of Trustees. We invite you to share your comments with the board during the public comment portion of our meeting. Citizens' input electronic sign up shows the rules for participating at the link provided in the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into discussion on issue raised. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:01 PM. We have a quorum with Mr. Charlie Bustillos, Mr. Pedro Ramirez, Mr. Shane Hagerty, Mr. Mike Rosales, Ms. Connie Woodruff, Ms. Catherine Lucero, myself, Kruse Ochoa. Mr. Lucero, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Now for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Woodruff. Ms. Mathewson, do we have any citizens' input?
We do. We have Eric Montelongo. And he's going to speak to the resolution.
Hi. Good evening or afternoon, everybody. My name is Eric Montelongo. I'm sorry, I'm just grabbing my notes, I'm sorry. I'm a pro parent of three students at the YISD. And I'm also a pastor, I'm also a nurse. I work at the El Paso Children's Hospital. So one of my best concerns is, of course, is children. And of course, one of them is my children as well. My question to you all as Board of Trustees for the school district is, is the school going to have proper PPE within the school as nurses, teachers? And are they going to have, are they going to be wearing gowns and 95 masks, face shields, gloves, things that we're supposed to be wearing as well as in the hospital? As long, you know, the same thing as I believe that teachers should be or the nurse should be wearing as well if, let's say, a child has a fever or has some of the symptoms of the COVID-19. Another thing is that, you know, with flu season just right around the corner, is, you know, some of these symptoms can also contraindicate with the COVID-19 along with the influenza. And I believe that, I know sometimes it's an inconvenience for us parents to have our children, especially if there's two working parents, you know. And it's an inconvenience sometimes for the, for us to have our children in our homes. But I believe that this is only temporarily. And if we try to get rid of this COVID-19, we get rid of the contact and we try to kind of isolate ourselves from being close to anybody, if any teachers or employees at the, at the hospital. If we try to reduce that as much as we can so we could go back to our normal lives, just like I'm sure everybody just wants to go back to normal. Again, this is only temporarily. I know there might be some employees or even children that is, that is immunocompromised. You know, I work with pediatric oncology and I know sometimes they're usually not back at school, but sometimes they go back to school. And it's not always just, you know, with oncology, it could be other type of immunosurprise diseases that sometimes these children have. Or even, you know, along with the employees, the teachers or, you know, cafeteria workers to the janitors from all the way up. You know, we don't want to use that type of, we don't want to expose them as well. And also is the nurses, if there's no nurse available, if she is sick or gets contacted with COVID-19, how is this solution going to be solved? Is there going to be another nurse or is that going to be guaranteed? Is there going to be isolation rooms within the school, you know, taking temperatures? And I know sometimes with the flu season coming around, before they head to school, they'll just give them some Tylenol or cough medicine and let them be back to school and not properly screened. And, you know, sometimes the word of the parent is going to be, no, they're okay. But I think there should be maybe some more precautions for that, too. It's like I said, you know, sometimes it might be an inconvenience to have them at home, but I think this is only temporarily and we can only make it as temporary as we want as parents and as educators, as nurses and everybody. So I wanted to know, is this proper training for the teachers and the nurses being directed by medical, a medical doctor for this type of training? And I think that's all I have, you know, I just want to make it as safe as possible, you know, as much as we want to send our kids back to school, have everything normal. It's just the best to, to do what we got to do to protect ourselves with everybody else before we head back to reality and go back to school.
Thank you, Mr. Montelongo. Somebody will contact you. Okay. Possibly tomorrow. I believe that we also discussed this with Eileen Montelongo.
Yes. Yes. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. And now we'll move on to the agenda review.
Sir, I'm sorry, we have our Linda Valencia also, and she's going to speak on virtual schools.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, President Ochoa, Superintendent De La Torre and Board members. I'm our Linda Valencia, president of the Sletta Teachers Association. And I'm here tonight to ask the district to reevaluate their school schedules. During the past several weeks, the most difficult thing to adjust to are the long hours that students are having to sit in front of their devices. TEA has mandated that three, third grade through fifth grade must have at least three hours a day of instruction. Sixth through 12th grade must have at least four hours of instruction. The state did not mandate times for kinder through second grade. But in the Sletta, all students must have at least seven hours a day in front of their devices. Now, I'm the first to say that in regular school, that is the norm. However, in this due time, it seems that seven hours is a day. It's way difficult as we had anticipated. I also understand that covering all the TEES and the STAR exam cannot be covered in three to four hours. And the push for seven hours is more appropriate for preparing for the state test. But in saying that, I believe that the district could find a solution in trying to help teachers and students get through the day without having students falling asleep in front of their devices. One solution that many teachers, parents have been asking for is that everyone have a midday break. In other words, all teachers, parents and students could take an hour break in the middle of the day in order to have lunch or just have a rest break. This small adjustment could get our students and teachers and parents through the afternoon. I'm hoping that the district will look into this issue and hope that they can be flexible and make this adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers, Ms. Mathewson?
No, that's all.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, proceeding. During the August 24, 2020 Board Workshop, no items from the consent or policy agenda items were pulled for a separate vote. The agenda is considered a consensus of the board. Dr. De La Torre, do you have a report for us this evening?
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, esteemed guests and staff. Just happy to report that from a technological standpoint or technological perspective, the first day of school, August 17th, did not disappoint. I want to commend our instructional leadership teams, that means our principals. Principals, I want to commend and thank all of the teachers who, who made it possible and all of the staff who have made it possible to have a relatively uneventful first two weeks of school. We can control, on our end, we can control how we develop the instructional framework, the platform. Gloria Chavez and her team, Shelley Smallwood and her team have been phenomenal relative to the technology. As Ms. Valencia shared, the human condition is something entirely different. And in recent meetings with superintendents, not just in Texas but in California, we're all getting the same response to the online learning platform, and that is, it is very difficult. It is taxing. Teachers are being asked, you know, to work in excess of what they would probably work if they were in the classroom. Having said that, we are in the middle of a pandemic and we're trying to make the best of it. And Dr. Chacon is aware of some of the concerns that have been expressed by both parents and teachers and faculty. Relatively speaking, when you're supporting almost 40,000 students and you're typically getting eight, 10, 12 phone calls a day from parents, we're not too disappointed about that, but we want to be respectful and responsive to those parents. On the faculty side, both our Lind and I are getting some concerns from teachers expressing how difficult and how tiring this format is. But under the circumstances, this is what we have available as a district. And we're only in the second week of our new school year. So I would ask for a little latitude, some patience. Dr. Chacon and the rest of our team are always taking inventory, for lack of a better word, gathering, collecting input from principals and teachers across the district. And if we need to make an adjustment, we'll make an adjustment. But again, we are on day eight of the new school year and we're looking at it objectively and trying to marry it with TEA's expectations. But in terms of the technical and the practical start of the school year, it went exceptionally well. And I want to thank everybody for their role in making that happen.
I'm asking him to unmute.
All right.
There you go.
Thank you. At this time, we will now open the public hearing per TEC 44.004. The Board of Trustees must hold a public hearing to discuss, set and set the district's tax rate on an annual basis. A notice of the public hearing to discuss the tax rates was published in El Paso Times on Sunday, August 16, 2020. Ms. Leeper, do we have a presentation on the tax rate?
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board and Dr. De La Torre. Yes, we have a very brief presentation. It's actually the same one that was shared with the board at the workshop on Monday. Before I delve into the presentation, I'd like to share a little bit of context once again. And let me get to that presentation for you. My screen does not like to. More. Now, let me talk about the context before we get to the presentation. There we go. I think you can see that now. So as you all well know, because you were instrumental in the process, in 2015, voters approved the first bond program for about $430 million. And in just four short years, we were able to deliver on all the projects within budget and on time, actually early. During that period, this board demonstrated exceptional fiscal leadership by reducing the INS or debt service tax rate by half a cent two years in a row for a total of a one penny decrease. Now, while a one cent decrease may not seem all that impactful, quite frankly, it's the only political subdivision that I'm aware of in the county or really in a very wide range of locations that has reduced the tax rate voluntarily rather than leaving it at the same or increasing it. So based on the success of the 2015 bond program, this board's fiscal leadership and our ongoing capital needs, in November of 2019, voters approved Bond 2019's program for another $425 million. You may recall that when we projected what it would do to our debt levels and to our future debt service, our financial advisor at the time did indicate, and it's probably still true, that we will eventually reach the Attorney General cap of 50 cents for debt service. Fortunately, with the January 2020 tranche and the first sale of debt from the Bond 2019 program, we didn't reach the maximum we anticipated. Instead of getting to .3975, we only are asking for an increase or we only need an increase of .3925. And so with that, let me go to the first slide with the meat of the presentation. So you can see three sections here. The proposed 2020 tax rate compared to the 2019 tax rate, which was approved, further compared to the 2018 approved tax rate. So under the proposed 2020 tax rate, in order to get a level comparison, a apples-to-apples comparison, if you will, we are establishing a median home value of $125,000. Obviously, each of the three large school districts within El Paso County has a different median or average family dwelling value. But to get a true comparison or fair comparison, we're going to level the initial home value to $125,000. Isleta ISD is the only school district in El Paso to offer the optional home state exemption of 20%. So immediately, Isleta homeowners are able to reduce their median valued home from the original value of $125,000 by 20%, bringing it to an adjusted home value of $100,000. Then all three districts offer the state's standard exemption of $25,000, rendering a taxable value in EPISD and SISD of $100,000 versus Isleta's taxable value of $75,000. Then you apply the tax rate. And so in EPISD, the tax rendered is $1,318, which is $233 more than an Isleta homeowner would pay. And then Socorro, the annual tax bill would be $1,365, which is $280 more than an Isleta family would pay. Moving to the far right, you can see that Isleta pay, Isleta taxpayer in 2018 paid an annual tax bill of $1,091, which is actually $6 more than they would pay under the proposed tax rate for 2020. Now, you may ask, how is that possible? Because we're talking about an effective rate or no new net revenue increase of 8.7%. As you may recall, in 2019, there was a major school finance reform bill. And I will show you on the next page. The MNO rate for us in 2018 was $1.17 per $100 valuation. The school finance reform bill decreased that rate by 10 cents, a little over 10 cents, and further decreased it for this year by another penny, bringing our rate down on the MNO side from 2018 to 2020 by 11 cents. However, as mentioned, on the INS or debt service side of the equation, we've gone from .285 in 2018 and 19 up to .3925 this year. So our overall tax rate proposed for 2020 is actually half a cent less than what was adopted in 2018. And with that, this concludes the presentation and I'll turn it over to Ms. Monica to let us know if there are any members of the public signed up to speak.
And I don't have anybody signed up for public speaking.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Leeper. Since we have no more comments or we don't have anyone signed up to speak, I will now close the public hearing.
President Ochoa, if I may, in addition to the information I supplied relative to the start of the new school year, I did want all of the trustees to know that you were just recently sent a list of all the capital improvement projects and major contracts that the district has entered into. I think someone requested that information in addition to the, the project and the source. In other words, the vendor, the cost, it also delineates the method used to enter into that procurement agreement. And I don't remember who asked for the list of all of the ongoing projects, both 2015 bond projects, 2019 bond projects and JOC projects and other contracts that we've entered into on the construction side of the house. But it's been emailed to all of you. You can pull it up and look at it if you have any questions. Either I or Ms. Leeper will be available to answer any of your questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So I will now close the public hearing. Proceed on to closed session. Monica, will you let me know?
Um, I think we're going to move into consent, sir.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. That's right. All right, consent items. Your agenda has been approved. May I have a motion on the? On the, may I have?
Mr. President, this is Connie Woodruff.
Ms. Woodruff?
I move to approve the remaining, the consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration.
I had a question on one of the, on one of the policy items.
Okay. I think we have already, but you have a question. I think we can, okay, go ahead.
It was on the FMF policy, the one that was completely removed to be moved over to the regulation side? Is there going to be any changes to that rate, to that language at all? Is it going to be the same language? Is, are there changes that will be made once it becomes a regulation?
Which policy was that?
FMF.
No, Trustee Hagerty, we just simply moved the language that used to live on the policy side into the administrative break side.
Thank you. In that case, I second Connie's motion.
Okay. All right.
Um, we're, we're just doing the consent right now. And then after consent, we move into the policy action items. So we're only voting on consent right now.
Okay, thank you. You want to read that again, Ms. Woodruff, so we?
Sure. All right. I move to approve the consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration.
And I have a second by Mr. Hagerty. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote? Trustee Rosales?
Yay.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Woodruff?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero?
Yay.
Trustee Hagerty?
Yes.
And I trust you, Ochoa, vote yay. Results are in, seven in favor. The order, the order of the agenda has been approved. May I have a motion on the policy agenda items?
Mr. President, this is Connie Woodruff.
Thank you. Ms. Woodruff?
May I, I'm sorry, excuse me. I move to approve the policy agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by CASB and the Sletta specific language.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hagerty, we have a second by Mr. Hagerty. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I trust you, Ochoa, vote yay. Results are in, seven. Okay, now we move on to the action items. Am I correct, Monica?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Action item number one, Order Accepting Tax Rule 2020-21. Is there any discussion? Mr. Hagerty?
I, I got a lot of questions and I appreciate the, the information that was given to us today. I know it was, it was a lot. It was about 200 pages given us two and a half hours ago. So I haven't gotten through all of it. I do have a lot of questions. I do have some reservations because I haven't gotten through all of it. What is an NIFA allotment?
I think, just for clarity, I think that first item shade is just accepting the county office's appraisal of the tax rule. It's the second item, I think, that you're referring to.
Thank you.
Again, there is no, no further discussion. Mr. Hagerty, you'll wait for the second item. May I have a motion?
Mr. President, this is Connie Woodruff.
Ms. Woodruff?
I move to approve an order accepting the tax rule certified by the 2020 Appraisal Review Board and certified by the Chief Appraiser.
May I have a second? Mr. Rosales? Second by Mr. Rosales. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote? Luceros, how do you vote?
Yay.
Thank you. Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I trust you, Ochoa, vote yay. Results are in, seven in favor. Okay, item number two. Action item number two, Order Setting Tax Rate 2020-21. Is there any discussion?
President Ochoa, I just wanted to mention that in addition to Lindley, Paul Braden, the bond attorney is also available to the board. Should you have any questions for him?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. De La Torre. Mr. Hagerty?
Thank you, sir. I had a few questions. Again, I think having a workshop might be a better opportunity to ask all these questions and to just become better acquainted with everything that we're being asked to, to look at in consideration of this vote. What are NIF, NIFA allotments? What are operating grants and contributions? What is bond refunding? What are operating grants and contributions? What is bond refunding?
NIFA is new instructional facilities allotment. And then what else? US refundings?
Right, and I saw, I guess, can you, can you elaborate on what a what that is, a bond refunding, and then also operating grants and contributions?
So operating grants and contributions are things that are donated to the district. Operating grants are grants we may get from the feds or from the state or private entities for operations. And then you ask about which refundings on bonds?
Bond refunding?
So we just had a bond refunding recently, and that's when we are, we reach an opportunity where we are able to refund existing bonds and basically refinance high debt for lower rate, lower interest rate debt. That's a refunding.
So then on the, the bond refunding, there's 2 point something million. Is that the amount we refunded? Is that the amount we saved? Is that we limited to the amount we can do per year?
So I don't know where the two and a half million is exactly that you're talking about. I can tell you that the bonds that we just refunded, when we do that, we have to escrow the proceeds and hold them so that we can pay back the debt when it's due, so that money is not immediately available for us to spend. It's, all of those are involved in the calculation of how much we have on hand to service our existing debt, but it's not a pot of cash that we got from refunding the other bonds.
I found out 45 of the YSD debt book. On the operational grants and contributions, there was 19 million that went towards long-term debt. Is that the bond?
Long-term debt would be bonds, yes.
Lindley?
Was that anticipated that we're going to get 19 million?
He also wanted a little elaboration on NFA and where that money comes from.
So as we construct new facilities periodically, usually on an annual basis, the state will allot new money, and it's like a matching contribution, if you will, when we are building new instructional facilities. And it's based, it, because it is a match, it's based on our investment in a new facility, and then they give us support for our debt. So there's existing debt allotment, there's new instructional facilities allotment, there's just the instructional facilities allotment, plain, not new necessarily, and those all contribute to the state's part of debt service. And so when we reduce our share of debt service on our local community, the state reduces their share, further exacerbating a problem if we're not meeting the debt covenants, the bond covenants that we've entered into.
Regarding the, the operational grants and contributions, is that anticipated? Do we know we were going to get 19 million on page 82 of the, was the final OS PDF?
Ms. Haney, while I'm pulling that up, if you know the answer to his question right away, do you mind giving it to him?
I don't believe that we got grants of 19 million. I don't have the OS right in front of me. If you could read me the line, I can probably give you an explanation of what that's for.
It says interest on long-term debt, operating grants and contributions was 18.9 million dollars.
Sorry, I'm, I'm pulling it up right now. You said it was on page 82, sir?
Yes.
Mary, I'm unable to get into it because it's not my shared document. Mr.
I'm, I'm looking on that page.
Number 72.
Okay. So that page of the financial statements is actually expenses. 19 million. But that one, I see 18.9 is operating grants and contributions. In all honesty, I believe that is what we paid out of our MNO side for the 2001 bond issue, because that's the only one that we pay out of our MNO side. Everything else is paid out of the INS side.
So I think, Mary, not, it's not just the 2001, it's the 2017, 1617 for the ABM upgrade. And so it's maintenance tax notes, and we're transferring it from our general fund to debt sides so that we can pay those.
Thank you. There's no show I have more questions, but I certainly don't want to take up all the time if anyone else has questions.
Mr. Hagerty, would it perhaps help to hear from Mr. Braden about why this is more of a perfunctory approval than than something that usually ends up being belabored by the governing board, because we've actually already entered into these covenants, we've already adopted the order. Now it's an administrative matter of approving the rate to support it. And he explains it much better than I do.
Thank you.
Wait, before we do that, Lindley, so am I to understand then what would happen then if this board decides not to adopt this particular tax rate this evening? This is a perfunctory process.
I think it would be better if you heard it from Mr. Braden. I think we talked some about it Monday, and I, I quite frankly, I just want to hear it from him. Mr. Braden, do you mind?
Sure, not at all. Can the board hear me?
Yes, sir.
Paul Braden, I'm with Norton Rose Full brought in bond counsel to the district. So every time the district issues bonds, as, as part of the bond order that the district adopts at the time of the bond issuance, it levies a tax associated with those bonds. And that's required by Texas law, and these, every time the, the district issues bonds, the review by the attorney general, the general, attorney general looks for that language, and it specifically states in every one of your bond orders that there already has been, as part of that bond issuance, a tax levied fully sufficient to pay the bonds associated with that without, with regard to rate or amount. And when your bonds are approved, and all your bonds are approved, except for refunding bonds, are approved by your electorate, they also approve that, they approve any tax rate associated with those bonds necessary to pay that debt service. So you've already adopted an election order, and you've already, under law, gotten approval of your, of your electorate to say whatever it takes to pay your INS debt service, you will levy it. And so what you're going through now is the process of figuring out what that amount is. But whatever the amount that is required to pay your INS debt service, you have to levy that, and it's not optional, and the fact that we're all dealing with, with COVID, that's no reason you could, for you not to levy your INS debt service. And if, if a board, and I'm sure this board would not do that, if a board were to take action not to levy an INS debt service, the bondholders could immediately sue the board under a writ of man Davis and require you to take this action, because it's supposed to be just an ministerial action, because the levy's already been set, and the commitment's already been made, not only by the board itself, but by the voters when they approve the bonds.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Hagerty?
Certainly not debating whether or not we need to pay the bills that we've incurred. I'm just trying to figure out how do we best pay those bills? Another question I had is, we've got 71.6 million in investments. Is that bond money? Is the bond money being used to?
So when we are in construction, and we've already sold the debt, we invest that debt, those proceeds, to pay for the construction as it takes place. We don't want the money to sit idle, so we invest it in the meantime. And as you mentioned, we earn interest on that. In this low-interest environment, I think we've only earned maybe 1.3 million on the debt that was just sold.
So what do we do with that 1.3 million? If it's, is it already allocated to something else? Is that something we can put towards to get us a few months down the road, and we don't have to give the taxpayers such a heavy burden all at once, or?
It's wholly insufficient to support the
Are there any other options? I'm raising it 8.7%.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hagerty. Ms. Lucero?
Well, I would, I would never consider our, I, I had not the option or the potential, Mr. Braden, that our, our, our voters would sue us for voting against a tax increase. So thank you for clarifying that. When I joined this board and became a school trustee, I understood that there'd be difficult votes to make. I put an extreme amount of thought and consideration into, into this, into this decision. Last year, I voted against the bond because of the financial position we could find ourselves in, as well as the increased burden to our taxpayers. No one could have predicted the global pandemic of COVID-19. No one could have understood the financial impact it would have on our economy and on our community. But here we are in uncertain times economically. In fact, El Paso was recently ranked the worst place in the country to find a job during the pandemic. We've heard the average increase described at around $580, $5.80 monthly, excuse me, or roughly the cost of a drink at a, at a fast food place or Starbucks. Well, there are Starbucks south of I-10. There are families in our district lined up at food banks that stem around four blocks. I saw as recent as this week. The families I represent are hurting financially. Lack of food, jobs, and transportation is a concern. Two of those, $5.80 gets you more than 10 pounds of rice at Food King, an eight-pound bag of pinto beans for $5.98 at Walmart on Alameda. One pound of lean ground beef approximately is $5.40, and for $5.42, you can purchase an eight-pound bag of potatoes. And lastly, even two gallons of milk, you can purchase for $5.80. So we aren't asking our family to sacrifice luxuries, we're asking them to sacrifice basic staples during a global pandemic. The increase we are discussing is a binary choice. We either vote for a tax increase or we exempt it. It almost feels as business as usual. I would like to see our public, and as a policy, for our public as a policymaker, that we've represented and exhausted all options, especially if I'm being asked to raise taxes during this unprecedented time. Even the city of El Paso did not raise taxes, which is uncommon for them, as we all know. For this reason, I, I just don't believe I can vote in favor of this particular increase at this time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lucero. Mr. Rosales?
Sound redundant. But it's just been pointed out that this, this tax rule is basically a ceremonial thing that we're doing. The commitments have always been there. The money has been allocated, projects are underway, and we would be in a very precarious position to our constituents. Should we not? But that's up to you. But I will do one thing. I will remind you. I will remind you that I was the only board member that wanted to exercise due prudence when we turned around and allotted $6 million in pay raises. We also made an adjustment on the health insurance, which accounted to, and you may correct me, Ms. Leeper, to the tune of about 1.8 million. That we needed. But at that time, I could foresee the tremendous pressures that you, Ms. Lucero, are, are now depicting. And we haven't hit bottom yet. Our unemployment in this community is 13%. We're probably going to take the longest time to recover from this pandemic, when and if it's ever over. So what I'm saying is that I have requested well, first of all, I, 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 I don't care to impose an 8.69 increase to the taxpayer. My commitment has always been since day one to take care of our children, to take care of our, of our teachers, and to look after the ancillary as well as to take care of the taxpayer. But I have requested that we do an analysis in the next meeting of the inner expenses that we're seeing. During the course of time, Dr. Delatorre has mentioned, Dr. Delatorre, you mentioned that we were looking and making sure that we were, as attrition happened, we were, we were taking a real prudent approach to rehires. Well, that, all that's up to money. And my question is now is, I'd like to see an analysis of the money. We're not talking about this particular money, because it's bond money. We're talking about just operations money from 18, 19, and 20, and see if, if we have and continue to be responsible in terms of dollars and cents to our constituents. I, I, I thought about this, the vote, and right now, you, you pretty much have hit it on the button. We have got, we, we have no choice, because the money has already, already been committed. The projects are already gone. So I'll, I'll do it according to the way I want to vote. But I definitely would like to have this board be a little bit more attentive in these times on finances. We're in good shape, but good shape financially is a moving target. You can be in good shape today, and tomorrow may be a different story. And I, I, I am not a pessimist. I've become a realist, and I want to make sure that once we get, if we ever get out of this pandemic, that would be our kids in El Paso and our district as well, are taken care of properly and prudently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosales. Any further discussion? Mr. Ramirez?
You know, I, I I appreciate the fact of what the process that we're going through. And I appreciate the fact that Ms. Leeper and Mr. Braden, their explanations. And, and while it is a perfunctory approval, the reality is, is that in my mind, with all due respect to the other trustees and how they feel about things, is that the community voted on this. Whether they truly understood it or not, that's beside the point, but they, they voted on this, and they approved this. This board approved this, with the exception of, of Mr. Hagerty. But this board approved this. One of the things that, one of the responsibilities we do have is a fiduciary responsibility. And quite honestly, we committed to this, the community asked us to do this, and we have to pay the bills. Now, when we voted on this back whenever, I forgot the date, who could have imagined where we'd be at right now? Nobody could have. And so, yeah, I, I'm concerned. And, and by the way, Trustee Lucero, I, I absolutely agree with you. And when we received the, the notification about the food boxes and stuff, that the program that the district's going to be engaged in today, you know, I, I hate, you know, I was thrilled, you know, because it's just another outlet to feed our families in this district. And so I, 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 I share your concern, Catherine and Shane, I truly do. And I have, I've sat and pondered it, but at, at the end of the day, this is something we've got to do. And, and like I said, I'm not happy about it. But this is something we have to do. This is something that we, we as a board agreed to when we voted on this back then, and, and, and we, again, we have that responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Any other discussion? Well, all I have to say, listening to all of you, you all have very good points. But we have to understand that back then, the community, the community is very well informed as to what the bond was supposed to do. It's for the betterment of our children and our students and for our teachers. We are out here, isolated in El Paso. we are out here isolated in El Paso, uh, and we're very far from the, from the decision makers up there in Austin and, and, and so we have to lot, lots of times fend for ourselves. Yes, uh, nobody likes to raise taxes. I don't like to pay taxes either. But it's part of our commitment to be a good citizen. And yes, I understand that some people are really suffering under this, uh, this pandemic. I mean, it has affected all of us some way. And I just, um, just want to make sure and, and that all our board members understand that this was voted by the community. They voted on it. We proposed a bond, but they voted for it and they voted for, for it by quite a wide margins. So yes, uh, this is something we don't like to do, but it's part of our job. Whether we like it or not. So the community, I think, hopefully understands that this is not just something we did offhand. This is something that was planned and because of what's happening in our society right now, we just have to bear with it. Okay. So that's all I have to say on this. Anybody else have anything else to say? Mr. Hagerty.
I understand and appreciate everyone's comments. I, I just don't feel that every avenue has been uh, looked at. I feel that there's still options. I think there's still money in that bond that can be used towards uh, lowering the amount. I'm not saying we don't pay our bills. What I'm saying is we don't, that'd be the taxpayers, our constituents, once we put us in office with such a large burden, if it's not necessary, if there's money from interest, if there's money from cost over, cost underruns, um, that could be used to be paying.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. If there's no further discussion, may I have a motion? Mr. Hagerty.
I move to defer the vote until we have a workshop on this item, knowing we have until September thirtieth to set the text.
Well, we have, okay, we have a motion right now to vote on this. If we have no motion, that doesn't, um, receive from here. So again, is there, may I have a motion? If not, we move on to the next item.
Mr. I think you have to take Mr. Hagerty's motion.
Yeah, I was gonna go doing that next.
Oh.
Hey, Mr. Hagerty, would you?
But if nobody seconds it, then it dies for lack of a second.
Yeah. Read your motion.
Okay. Okay, I didn't hear what you said.
Yes, can you read your motion again, please?
I move that we defer the setting of the tax rate until after a workshop has been set up so we can go down all avenues and make sure that, um, we've exhausted all other options, knowing that we have until September thirtieth to approve this tax rate.
May I have a second?
A second.
Hey, Mr. Rosales, second one? Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote? Was that again?
Yay.
Yay. Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
No.
Trustee, how do you vote? How do you vote on this motion?
Who's this? Me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote? Trustee Lucero.
Yay.
Trustee Hagerty?
Yes.
And I, trustee Ochoa, vote no. So the results are in. Five in favor, two opposed. Motion carries. Right. Action item number three. Have to be delicate and alternate designation. Any discussion? Do we have any volunteers? If there's no further discussion, uh, then I may have a motion on this. Okay. No motion. We'll move on to the next. Consider board resolution requesting suspension of start testing for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Is there any discussion? Can everybody hear me? Yeah? Okay. May I have a motion?
It's Mr. Hagerty.
Mr. Hagerty.
Uh, I move to approve the resolution as written.
Second. Second.
Mr. Rosales seconded. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, trustee Ochoa, vote yes. Results are in, seven in favor. Action item number five.
Mr. President Ochoa, did we get, uh, trustee Hagerty's vote on that?
Oh, I did get them. I thought I, I'm sorry. Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sorry. It's been a long day.
Yes.
Long day. All right. So the results are in, seven in favor and none opposed. Thank you, Ms. Monica.
Yes, sir.
Okay, action item number five, modification of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty internal audit plan and timing of future plans. Is there any discussion? Further discussion, may I have a motion?
Mr. Hagerty, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Ochoa. I guess I was thinking of Shane there. Sorry.
Okay, Ms. Woodruff.
I move to approve modification of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit plan to extend the audit period to December thirty-first, twenty twenty, and thereafter have audit plans approved for the calendar year.
May I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Rosales seconded. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, trustee Ochoa, vote yes. Yay. Results are in, seven in favor. Okay, action item number six. Report of phase two solicitation bond. Number two zero one nine, I mean, solicitation bond. Number bond twenty nineteen RFP dash zero one BP one nine zero four, Bel Air High School additions and renovations. Is there?
Mr. Ochoa, I'd like to say something.
Yes, Ms. Woodruff.
So, uh, when I saw this come up on, uh, our agenda, I started thinking about, um, the ten children, my ten children, who all graduated from Bel Air High School. And I started thinking about the, the, the great service that that building has given us since nineteen fifty-seven. And I just want to say actually, thank you to that building. Uh, you served us well. Thank you.
Any further discussion? No further discussion. May I have a motion?
Mr. Ochoa.
Ms. Woodruff.
I move to approve award of phase number two solicitation number bond twenty nineteen RFP zero one BP one nine zero four, Bel Air High School additions and renovations for one million, seven hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred forty-one dollars to Buford Thompson Company LLC from bond funds toward the guaranteed maximum price with the remaining packages totaling the guaranteed maximum price and estimated cost of construction presented at subsequent board meetings contingent upon final negotiation of contract documents and legal counsel review.
I'll take a second. Hagerty seconds?
Second.
Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
How do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Hey.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, trustee Ochoa, vote yay. Results are in, seven in favor. All right, thank you. We will now move on to the closed executive meeting. The board of trustees has determined that a closed meeting of the board of trustees is required to discuss the items set forth in the posted agenda for the state. Such closed meeting is authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Section five five one dot zero zero one, including but not limited to the sections and, and purposes covered by the following section of the Texas government, government code. Five five one dot zero seven one, seven two, seven three, seven four, seven six, eight two, one two seven, eight two one, eight three and eight four. Should any final decision or vote be required with regard to any matter considering closed session, the final action, decision or vote shall be in the open meeting or subsequent public meeting with notice. The board will now go into closed session at seven oh two. 7:02.